Much to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, we don't seem to have a quorum tonight. I apologize for that. So, we can't even approve the minutes from last meeting. We can now hear, you know, what progress has been made on resolving comments in the letters and other commissions, boards, panels, and stuff that you've been to within the township and things like that.
Sure, we had to do enough to do this.
Good eve- good evening. Is that working?
Is it working?
Okay, good. I'm Todd Pollock. I'm here with Wayne Layton from my office. We appreciate your time this evening to discuss our property, the 51 lot project as the reeves and select slight properties being developed in the R1 zoning area. I'll make a short presentation. As indicated at the close of last month's planning commission meeting, we're working on the Township Engineers' Letters of October 14th. We met with Paul, the Township Engineer, to clarify a number of details. Obviously, not enough time to make changes and resubmit for a review this evening. Thus, we formally extended the decision period for the township by a couple of months to February 8th, 2023. We intend to have a revised plan submitted for your review by your engineer for discussion at last- at next month's meeting. Consequently, we do not have our engineer or land use attorney this evening to discuss the engineer's letters. However, in the interim, we thought it appropriate to discuss with you a couple of planning items that we feel make for a better development. And hopefully, if appropriate, get feedback on how the Commission views these planning items. The first item is utilizing a T versus a Y intersection at the intersection of Sedgley and Eagles Point. Intersection right here. The previous planning commission back in 2009 recommended a T intersection. The T intersection allows for a three-way stop. So, this is a T intersection at this location. What it does is allow for a three-way stop at this location along with a three-way stop at that location. We're hoping that helps deter any potential cut-through traffic. So, as you can see on the Y intersection, it was basically if you're coming in off of Valley Forge Road, it was kind of a sweep to the right. So, this will have a little bit of a circuitous turn here, allowing for what we feel is a little bit of a traffic calming measure to help out with that. The T intersection also eliminates some potential confusion with traffic movements that were pointed out by the Township Engineer. And in realigning Eagles Point a bit further south, this lo- at this location here, we were able to bring the length-to-width ratio on the lots on the Cove side here into conformity. So, a number of things happened by doing that. The T intersection that we submitted with the plan shown on the alternate sheet required a waiver due to the cul-de-sac length. So, I think that was sheet number 43, I believe it was, of a plan set. And so, we had requested a waiver for a T intersection. However, this T intersection we're presenting here tonight shows a shorter 500-foot length that is permitted by the ordinance. So, at this point, we have a 500-foot cul-de-sac that's permitted by the ordinance, a little shorter than the one that we presented in the previous plan. And by doing so, we won't need a waiver. So, we'll go ahead and make that change. We thought we pointed out tonight, but I think it's a positive addition to the plan. And since it doesn't require a waiver, as we redo our plans for next month, we'll include The second planning item I'd like to consider is reducing the cartway widths and the sidewalk on one side of the roads. The previous planning commission, again, back in 2009, recommended both a reduction in the cartway width and sidewalks on one side throughout the development. Your ordinance, however, requires a 32-foot wide cartway and sidewalks is required by With respect to cartway width, we suggest a waiver to allow for a 24-foot cartway on Sedgley Road. So, if you're coming into development on Sedgley Road from Valley Forge Road to that T intersection that we just looked at, there are no curb cuts or housing- or houses along here that will take access from that. So...
Route 23?
Pardon me?
That roadway, is that off of Route 23?
Yes, the road coming in off of Route 23, back behind the homes on Dorchester Road to the T intersection.
Got it.
We don't- we're not taking any houses, driveways off of that area. So, we're suggesting a 24-foot cartway there. The narrow roadway has a traffic calming effect, reducing vehicle speed. The lower speed also helps to diminish potential cut-through traffic. The suggested planning items provide significant environmental advantages as well, reducing the impervious coverage within that access strip by 30%. I have a visual here on that. So, this is the 50-foot wide right-of-way. This is would be Sedgley Road, as you feel it coming in from Valley Forge Road towards the development. So, we're showing the required 32-foot wide cartway. You have a five-foot grass strip adjacent to the curb, and we're showing a four-foot sidewalk on this side. On the other side, we're showing again a grass strip. We're showing a slight wall. What I wanted to do is show, this is a three-foot differential between the grade and the top of road. And what that might look like is a sidewalk on this side and a small retaining wall. Needs to be less, I think, less than 36 inches. So, we're showing a two-foot wall there. So, this would be what I guess is going to be on the plan set as we submit the plans. We're asking a waiver to take a look at this. This, just underneath it here, we're showing a 24-foot cartway. We're showing that same five-foot grass strip, showing the same four-foot sidewalk. And you can see we've got a little leftover grass on that side. More importantly, on the existing home side, the Dorchester Road homes back up to this, we're showing a screening buffer, a significant screening buffer along there that could be very helpful for the neighbors along Dorchester. So, we don't really feel there's a requirement for a sidewalk on both sides coming in off of Valley Forge Road. So, we'd rather see this situation. And again, this is about 30% less impervious coverage in that strip going down here. And that has some positive effects in terms of stormwater management and those type of things. We also would like to have considered a 28-foot cartway width throughout the development with sidewalk on one side, and that I'm showing down here. By doing so, we have about a 20% reduction impervious coverage within the right-of-way going through the development. 28-foot wide cartway is plenty wide for low-density development like this. I actually just went through Somwood Farms. It's a local neighborhood not too far from here, which is easy for you all to kind of drive through and take a look at. And you can get a sense, we have drive- we have a 28-foot cartway in there, and we have a sidewalk on like the center, around the center, and on East Gate Drive. So, if you take a look at that, you can see how much paving and what that feels like. It's a pretty good representation of what we're suggesting a waiver for, which is a 28-foot cartway. I continue to do developments in other places, and over the last 20 years, I would say on projects where I've got three-quarter acre and one-acre sites, that we've utilized 24-foot and 28-foot cartways, mostly 24-foot cartways. And that has houses loaded on both sides of the street, and it seems to work very well. So, again, we're asking for a waiver to reduce the amount of impervious coverage along those- in that area. Also, every time we reduce the cartway width, we sort of reduce the speed of the traffic in there. You know, this 32-foot wide cartway with no curb cuts, somebody's late for work, or someone is ready to get home for dinner, it's- it's- it would sort of entice people to speed, I think. And I don't think it's really something we want to have happen in the back of the homes The third planning issue on my agenda tonight is East Philip Connection. The planning commission in 2009 recommended the connection be private. We showed a design and installation to appear like an estate-style entry with a cobblestone, rumble strips, stone pillars, with a private posting within the piers. This will be accomplished by the HOA owning the strip. And we also talked about a proviso where the township could ultimately take it public or require the homeowners association to install a gate should cut-through traffic be problematic. So, what we're really talking about is the 50-foot strip that we're going to be subdividing off of 876 East Philip Drive. Potentially, that could remain and owned by the homeowners association, thus make it a private, and we have some control over the amount of traffic to come through there. So, again, that was- the whole idea of that was to prevent any cut-through traffic through our development and also through East Philip. The last planning issue I had on my agenda is streetlights. Streetlights were discussed back in 2009. Ultimately, they were proposed at the intersections, although at the time, I don't believe they were required. Paul, your engineer raised a legitimate concern with lights shining on the other properties. What we can do is install shields to direct the light towards the ground on those streetlights. However, your EAC just recommended no streetlights. So, I'm suggesting we leave the streetlights on the plans and a note that shields to be installed. However, in the alternative, if the planning commission recommends no streetlights, I'm happy to remove it from the plans. In the end, we're happy to do whatever the supervisors desire, the streetlights or no streetlights. It's not a major碍事. So, whatever is- whatever you all think's best. That's it. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you for explaining things so well.
So, you've had a meeting with the Township Engineer and discussed resolution of some of the comments.
Many, many items. A lot of them were details that we understand what Paul was trying for us to do, and I think most of all those will be corrected on the- those details will be corrected on the new plan set.
Okay. So, what are the highlights of what's left to work through?
Well, we haven't gotten a revised submission of plans, so technically, all the comments still have to be addressed. Just prior to the engineering meeting, there was a discussion because I wanted to go into the engineering meeting and explain to the applicant thoughts for the board supervisors on things like cartway width and sidewalk, et cetera. In the meeting that we had, I did- I did explain that the board supervisors were anticipating sidewalk on both sides of the roads. That's what they would- that's what they told me to prefer, and that's what I told the applicant, as well as that they wanted the cartways to be the full width, no reduction in size of the cartway. So, those were two of the different items. You know, Mr. Pollock explained his opinion on these, which the planning commission ultimately will be able to make a recommendation or decisions upon to provide to the board. But prior to that meeting, I wanted to relay to the applicant some of the thoughts from the board supervisors so that, you know, as we're going through the iterative processes of the project design, there's no change right there at the end for them. So, those were two of the bigger items. But we haven't gotten a revised set of plans. You know, Mr. Pollock explained how they're putting in the T intersection, which, again, as it shows right now with the fork chop, there was a little bit of confusion on who gets the right-of-way. It's kind of a- the T intersection is a much better alternative, and so that's moving in the right direction. And that was really what I wanted to say based off of what Mr. Pollock said.
Okay.
And I clearly understand from that meeting that there was a desire for the 32-foot wide and sidewalks on both sides. Again, part of me, the- just the environmental impact of that, part of me says, I gotta at least bring it to you guys and see if it makes sense for a recommendation to the supervisor. So, it's hard for me just to do that without making sure everybody understands the decades' worth of additional water and salt and those kind of things. Part of me wouldn't do that. I had to come here and ask for this. It's a way- it's a request.
Also, at the last meeting, there was some question about the Judge Nagel's decision on specifically referencing to accesses from East Philip for the PRD developments as to whether or not they carried over or back to this.
Not the PRD. The PRD's got nothing really to do with this, but it may be useful for context and just for history. But Mr. Snyder and I are in a discussion about the impact of Judge Nagel's decision and, you know, to what extent it covers some of the items. So, I'm basically waiting for John to respond to a letter that I sent a couple days ago outlining a number of potential legal issues. And it's not fair to discuss them tonight. Terry Roy's not here. And so, we're making progress on that. Let's put it that way, and I'm hopeful that at our next meeting, we might be able to come to some conclusions about some of these things.
Also, now that you've been to the environmental advisory people and had discussions with them, and there was a letter that they issued on that, that there were things in there that I think need to be addressed.
Yes, we are. We don't have enough time to respond to that, but we are- there's a number of things we're doing. I think I even mentioned at the last planning commission meeting, we are doing a wetlands update. Right now, we do have clearances still in effect for the bog turtle and for the red-bellied turtle. So, they're still in effect, but we are redoing those since they run out next year, and this is a couple-year process to get going here. So, that's happening. And we also have the- David Moskowitz, he's the eagle expert, working as well. So, a lot of stuff is in- is happening, but nothing I can report back on yet.
Okay. One of my concerns that was also in the letter from the Environmental Council people was the off-site wetlands and classification of the wetlands around the perimeter of the reservoir.
So, I can give you an update on part of that. Our wetlands- our wetlands will go onto the Aqua property for any place that it would have an impact on our property. So, if, for instance, if there's wetlands here and there's 100-foot wetlands here and it affects our property in terms of our setback, we'll be looking at that. There might be areas on the Aqua property, for instance, here. If there's no wetlands between here and here, even 100-foot setback wouldn't affect our property. We're not going to go down beyond what might affect our property. But anything that could have an effect on our property, we're going to go on the Aqua property and take a look at it.
And they're also going to assess the bog turtle and things like that?
Yes. Yeah, we have already asked for and we're underway with taking a look at, like I said, the red- the bog turtle and the red- red-bellied turtle.
Do the eagles still nest there?
There are eagles still in the nest across- across the reservoir. So, and they're aware of that.
Okay. And I know that the classification of the wetlands can impact what type of permit that you're going to need.
Yeah, the best way I can say this is, we will need a permit. So, we're going to have to get either a GP5 or an individual permit, whatever is required. At this point, I'm not sure we're on the same page about the classification, but ultimately, we're going to need the permit. So, whatever DEP deems is correct, we'll be getting.
I have seen in projects where, like US Fish and Wildlife, will put a buffer around even potential habitat for bog turtles and so on that can affect layouts and positioning of houses and stuff within- in the development if they're close enough to those wetlands, those areas. So, I'd hate to see that, you know, that anything get down the road here and then all at once we find out we have an issue with a bog turtle habitat setback or something.
Understood. We've had- we've had plenty of people on the property for bog turtle and yellow-belly over the- over the years, and I believe we'll wind up with the clearances we needed. We are- we are- we do have the 150-foot buffer from the reservoir right now, which helps with that as well.
I think one of the other concerns the Environmental Advisory Council had was on the environmental impact assessment.
Yes, I understand.
That they wanted a little more detail, a little more-
We're going to redo that. It was suggested by the EAC that we redo that, and we are going to have Black and Thompson Panzack redo the environmental impact assessment.
Did you check for understanding? The PRD is no longer an option if you move in this direction, is what you're trying to get across?
Trying to get across whichever plan we get approved, the reeves want to move forward with. So, my sellers are very anxious, so we agreed to move on a couple of different fronts. Whichever one we get approved first is the direction we intend to go.
Kind of coming back to East- East Phillips and potentially being a private access and so on, I don't know what other considerations can be done there and making it like an emergency-only access that police and fire can get through. Or if the other access is blocked, it would be a way out for people, but only under those circumstances or card-key access type that only the residents of this development could come in and out through that entrance. Whatever we can do to limit that to the, I guess, limit it to the maximum extent possible and still not need other relief.
Right. So, I think that's where we kind of wound up with the planning commission last time, the idea that we think the traffic calming measures, if we can do the narrow roads, if we can do, you know, the different stops, and if we can make that private entrance through there, we would take a reasonable, if for some reason we still wind up with cut-through traffic, that the HOA would be responsible for installing that gate. So, that's the- that's ultimately what we think is the answer there.
And we talked about, or you talked about, the limiting the impervious on the site. Currently, the- each house has a half-circle driveway in the front yard, and if we're going to be limiting the impervious in other areas, I think a good place to look there would be on those driveways.
We agreed with- we agree with doing that, and that'll be one of the things that you'll see on the new plan.
I think one of the things that maybe we can consider on this, too, especially if, you know, any kind of recommendation is made to- for narrower streets, that the streets would be privately owned by the HOA and maintained by the HOA. Is that something that we should entertain?
I think the best way to put that is that we will- we'll still offer for dedication. It's kind of interesting that the people that live here would pay the taxes they will and won't get the services. So, I think the way your ordinance reads, we'll offer for dedication, but it obviously is the supervisors that make the ultimate decision to whether accept them or not.
And I think the- what I heard was that right now, the leaning is toward asking for sidewalks on one side, but the guidance is that really we want sidewalks on both sides of the road.
Correct.
And sidewalks on both sides of the road, that includes the Sedgley Road access from Valley Forge 23 into Eagles Point Road, is sidewalks on both sides of that?
That is correct, every road.
Really?
Yes.
Why?
It was the decision the board supervisors.
That decision was made, was that a public meeting?
Well, it was discussion. I mean, obviously, they'll make the decision when you present, but I wanted to, as you're revising the plans, I wanted to explain what the board supervisors would be expecting. So, that's what I wanted to try to- So that's what I wanted to try to convey to you in our engineering. I'm unaware if they have or haven't.
You don't want sidewalks?
You don't want sidewalks where? Along the entrance road is what you're saying?
Uh, sorry, the buffer.
In the buffer on that, on your side?
Yeah, one says sidewalks is not on one side of the street, opposite where the homes are. So middle blocks, that's preferable, not to mention the screen block, also preferable.
Then we come to the actual intersection at 23 and so on, with obviously needing a new PENDOT HOP for that. And I believe an HOP was granted some time ago, which has since expired. And we're going to need a, you're going to submit a revised traffic study?
Yeah, I just give you an update on that. I talked to Traffic Planning and Design today. They have the counts in, they've got a preliminary report done, and should have something for me next week. So I'll review it first, but then we'll send it into the township once we're set up.
So a lot of this is going to hinge on what PENDOT, what's in the traffic study and what PENDOT is willing to permit.
Right, we will need a permit, so yeah, it'll be PENDOT.
One of the, one of the big issues and hot buttons east this day is the stormwater management aspects of the project. And on the PRD plan, there were a lot of like rain gardens and that took runoff. So most of the runoff had to go through some sort of water quality control measure that would be, come under, fall under the NPDS Stormwater Management, Post-Construction Stormwater Management. I think the plan for this had underground storage vaults.
Yeah, we agreed, just to bring up the speed on that, we agreed to take a look at, and we're doing it right now. And hopefully, for our next submission, we're looking at where we could take some of these undergrounds and do some basins. We're also taking a look at, we're suggested to look at some different drainage areas. That's all happening right now. So to the extent possible that we could go with basins and vegetative strips and those kind of things, I would be for that. So we'll, we'll take a look at what we can do on this plan. Now, obviously, that was all, we spent a lot of time with that on the PRD plan. And so we got a lot of direction out of, out of doing that. So the question is, can we take some of that input and apply it to this plan? To the extent we can, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay. I know water quality is big, you know, it's water supply, seems to be, you know, it should be a big concern. I know that Aqua's expressed, you know, an interest in not having infiltration, but I think there are plenty of other options that are available, that we can get the water quality, manage that two-year increase in volume with, you know, manage release concept, rain gardens, things like that. Have, that we get most of the disturbed area to go through some sort of device.
Yep, and this may be two-stage, I'm just talking off the cuff right now, but we're going to have to get a preliminary plan that gets approval, and that it goes by your ordinance. And that's like, then we could take maybe a second step at going from preliminary to final to see what other stormwater quality stuff might be appropriate that everybody can agree on. But I think we need to make sure that we meet your ordinances at preliminary plan, because we can't afford not to get that, to move in that direction.
Okay. And what I'm also trying to convey here is, it's not just our ordinance, but it's going to be the Chapter 102 NPDS?
Correct.
Ordinance for the water quality aspects of what's going on.
Absolutely, we'll need all those permits.
That could have a big impact.
By the way, just to decide on that, we were one of the first companies, this was down in a project in Radnor, where we took stormwater quality to a new level. We've got a nice write-up in all the magazines about doing that. Or our company's been doing that for many, many years.
Okay. Well, those are sort of my, my highlights that I've been thinking about. I don't know if Barbara or Mike has other input questions?
No, I think he's answered all the stuff. I was at the environmental meeting, and there was a bunch of the answers, the questions that I had were answered there, so.
Well, it sounds like you're doing a lot of homework, but I just have one question about the former Reeves home and what objectively speaking, how that might be made useful to the homeowners and in terms of historic aspects of that. There's a lot of stuff around that could be contributed from our Heritage Center, from the Historical Society, to make a place of interest for both the homeowners and the community.
Right, at this point, Barbara, we're looking at a resale of that property. Now, we've done a number of things, increasing that lot size and some of those kind of things. And we talked about putting some notes on the plan that, you know, will obviously go with the historic properties and consideration of, I don't know how the note will be worded yet, but potentially the homes on either side of it to, let's see if we can pick up the arc. I don't know how we're going to, I don't know how we're going to say it, but the idea is to be sensitive on the adjacent houses to the William Reeves house.
Right, but depending on your plan, in terms of the assets that have been provided both to the Heritage Center as well as the Historical Society, there are a lot of interesting things that would be just a plus to the residents in the, in the new community.
Right, we'd like to take that, aim along with that as well. We see that-
Right, we'd be happy to share things with you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite the members of the public to come up and ask questions, express concerns, and so on. You need to, you know, give your name and address and so on, and-
I'm Albert Giovanella, and I live actually on White Horse Road, not far from here, in White Horse and Pickering there. But before, and this is a very nice photograph, before you had one that showed a little bit wider. And what I mean by, and if you could somehow go back to- Yeah, see this one here? And so I just was curious as to what the nearest homes were slightly off of the map. And, you know, and down here, what's on this, so people could ask questions on how that might be impacting. Because, you know, we've had a very nice representation this unit, but I would just like to see-
How it fits in the bigger picture?
Yeah.
Maybe next time I really get that larger, that would be- The size of the-
And I think there was one before, that, you know, Spruce Grove Lane and all, and see all the little things. And also, just curious, just a question for the people. Is this lane making it unto itself, or does it own its own electrical grid and stuff? Or does it tap into surrounding grids and plumbing grids and all that?
Yeah, so it'll be-
Thanks for the question. Yeah, this is a public sewer and public water, and it'll be serviced by Pico Gas and Electric. All public utilities.
Yeah, you can keep that one in.
We have an extra microphone tonight.
Hello, I'm Nicole DePalma, and I'm at 762 Coventry Lane. I just had a curiosity, was wondering, is the traffic study that they're doing also going to be teamed up with the traffic study of Wawa? Because I feel like we're bringing a lot of congestion to this neighborhood that I live in. And I'd love to know if they're speaking with each other, the two projects?
I know when I talk to Traffic Planning and Design today, that they're well aware of the Aqua, I mean, excuse me, of the Wawa. And we were talking, we were talking about that. So I think any traffic study needs to take into account prospective projects as well. So I assume that will be part of the study. I have not seen the study yet.
The traffic study is also going to be coordinated through PENDOT-
Yes.
-for the highway occupancy permits. And there is already an existing traffic study that they have, broader, larger area that involves most of the traffic lights along 23. So whatever they propose, and whatever Wawa proposes, we'll have to dovetail into that study- and take everything into consideration.
Yeah, that lot looks like it's under contract also, the one adjacent to it. So I just feel like a lot is happening really fast. Hopefully, they're in coordination with each other, and just with the total impact will be like a few years.
Okay.
Okay, so I brought you a microphone. So I have- Oh, for the video, oh, great, okay, thanks. So one statement and two questions, I guess, and I'll be real quick. Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, so my name is Tom Chianis, I'm at 32 Dorchester. So just one comment, this strip along here, just let me move out of ways so y'all can see. So this entrance in here is what I think the primary concern is. And look, I can't speak for all my neighbors, but I'm pretty sure they're going to agree. Just hopefully, common sense will prevail. There's no need for two sidewalks, you know, coming down this side here. And, you know, a buffer between the road and the existing neighbors would be really beneficial for everybody. You know, in my opinion, and I'm sure everyone else is going to agree. So just take that into consideration, that's my statement, hopefully, common sense will prevail. Two specific questions, I guess. You know, we talked about buffer here, which will be ideal. Wondering about the buffer for all the neighbors, but, you know, obviously, I'm concerned about myself too, in terms of between the actual houses themselves, you know, and the adjacent properties. So it's kind of unmarked right here. Looks like there might be a little buffer, but what typically is done in situations like this?
So there is a 30-foot-wide approximately Aqua easement that is not on the property line. It's back in on the property line. So, in fact, some of that got cleared out. I went by there about a year, half a year ago, I said, whoa. So in any event, that certainly can grow back and be a nice buffer. And our home-
You all go beyond that buffer, right?
That's correct. So our, our homeowners are as much interested in buffer, to backyard to backyard, so- Yeah, so they wind up doing quite a bit of buffering, just typically, typically happens.
Okay, perfect. And then, final question here. There's a rather lovely stand of trees right here, tall pine trees, very mature, really nice from the skyline standpoint. If you, if you don't do the variance, it's impossible for them not to come down. So the variance, I think, for a narrower road will save, I think, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, maybe, I don't know if you did the study or not, and you probably know which trees I'm talking about. Will a narrower variance save a lot of those trees?
A, yes, a lot is a relative term. You know, a lot of those trees are in this area that is, what's the name, Belmont Terrace, that is, that's not our property, so we don't control it, so we won't be on it. So those trees will obviously not be touched.
Karen Hillier, 920 Valley Forge Road, just wanted to take a look at this kind of, this is- This property here is 920. I also agree with you and your Dorchester neighbors. We would also like to see the roadway as narrow as possible, and agree with you, one sidewalk is all that's necessary, because we would love to save as much tree line along that road as possible. Okay, thank you.
Hello, Frank McQuirrell, Spruce Grove Lane. Just kind of a general question from Mr. Paul, in your experience, how long would the construction period be for a project? The day the first, you know, tree goes down or whatever it is, until the last house is completed?
So that really depends on market conditions, but typically, we're probably looking at about five to six years from start to finish. Now, a lot of those at the end really won't affect much, they'll affect the houses right around them, but not the bigger picture.
So five to six years?
Yep, typically. Could be a little less, depending on the market conditions.
I'm Albert Giovanella again, and I think we talked about this before, but I'd just like to ask that all of your, you know, your environment, your water studies and all, not be based on figures from five years ago or something, but I think a lot of people in the country now have agreed that climate change is happening. So what would, you know, base your statistics on? What might, what scientists or whoever you go to in the local area might predict for 2030 or 2035? It's very important, because we've seen some incredible rainfall.
That's true. And as an update, we're, we're not going to use the information that we had in 2006. We're getting the new plates, and we're doing new stormwater testing as well.
George Sillip, Spruce Grove Lane. One of the questions, I'm wondering regarding the East Phillips exit. Have you consulted the police and fire departments, or have they assessed the need for another exit or entrance, instead of just one?
Yeah, so when we first started this project, we just had the one entrance out on Valley Forge Road. And we've had a number of people that have said they knew the property, had experience with the property, and that would be problematic. And we, after we looked at it and got our traffic counts, we agreed. So we do believe that we need two, two means of ingress and egress.
But have the police and fire departments-
I have not, I have not touched base with them on that.
Are you, you know, agree on the reasons for two?
Can you elaborate on the history of why two?
Could you give your name and-
845 East Phillips. Mike Busia.
Mike, when we were in with our first plans, we got a lot of input from people, said that a project like this would need two, including residents in the area here. So we looked at that hard and decided that that was probably the right way to go, so for planning purposes.
So just a follow-up, it's a desire to have two, not required to have two, is that right?
No, I believe, I believe we need the two. I'd have to ask, I don't have the right guys here tonight, but I believe we need both.
So I think it'd be helpful to understand the need for two as opposed to the desire for two?
Yeah, and that ties into the question I'm asking about the police and fire departments, basically, assessing on that, so they can get to the progress.
Hi, Morgan Walden, 85 South White Horse, so I'm on the corner of White Horse and East Phillips, like down the end to the right there. So I really don't like the idea of the cul-de-sac breakthrough, obviously, just because we walk that cul-de-sac every day with my four-year-old, and I bought the house because it was on a cul-de-sac. So they were saying that, you know, if it turns out there's too many cut-throughs, that it could be made- be made private with the HOA paying for it. So, I guess I'm wondering, why isn't it the most restrictive to start with? So, you know, the HOA is obviously going to fight that because it's not going to bother them, because they're, you know, might be cutting through and using them more often than they need to. So, I feel like if the onus is going to be on us, then, to prove that it's creating a problem. And so, then, we're going to be fighting another fight against the HOA to show that it's causing a disturbance for us. So, I just feel like, number one, I don't want it to be broken through. But number two, why, if, to, to make the best of a bad situation, why don't we make it more restrictive to start with instead of trying to shore it up after it's a problem?
Suzanne Rocky, I'm 160 Diamond Rock Road, but I had property at 877 East Philip Drive. I've been with this program for 16 years. And as Mr. Pollak said, originally, there was just one entrance. And yes, it was discussed with the planning commission that, gee, it would be nice for safety measures to have a second entrance. Can you find one? And so, somehow, he's decided on East Philip Drive. I just want to say, I can't imagine, and this was my point over the last 16 years, how the planning commission can approve this plan with an access from East Philip Drive. Because we have a cul-de-sac Saldos ordinance that says a cul-de-sac cannot be broken through and made as a through road unless the supervisors deem it okay. And it has to be for a special reason. When, when this was discussed, the access, Mr. Pollak did agree that he didn't need a second entrance. But it would be nice because it's better for marketing. I, that's a quote from him. True. And the police and the fire department did say that he didn't need a second access. And we have other communities like Potter's, Potter's Pond and Dogwood. And there's other cul-de-sac communities that only have one entrance. This community on East Philip Drive's been there for six, 60-plus years. And it's a beautiful little plant community. And people have paid extra money to live on this street. And we've had a big turnover recently. I mean, I was the last holdout, and my parents owned it for 65 years. It's just would be a shame that we would lose that beautiful community as a, as a pass-through for this new community. I don't think that's a good reason to break through a cul-de-sac. And again, our forefathers created these Saldos to protect our township and, and streets like this. So, I, I feel like, A, this plan can't go further until it's presented to the supervisors, and they decide whether or not to break through this cul-de-sac so that this plan could go through with two entrances. Or just take the one entrance out and then present it with the one entrance off of 23. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the community. I just don't feel like another community should suffer, so this one could be built.
So, Kim, can we take an action item to find out if it is required by our new zoning ordinances and laws to find out if it needs two entrances and get confirmation of that? I was under the impression that it was required, not a desire.
We can, we can make an action, because it's not a requirement. But we can, we can look into that. But just to be clear, it's only based on what was in place at the time or even...
I'm sorry, say that again?
You know, you, you mentioned...
No, I'm just saying, is if, if there's an ordinance at, at the time that this was being developed, that said we needed two entrances or one entrance is okay, and it's just a desire. So, is it a desire or is it a requirement? And then, we can argue the fact whether or not we wanted, you know, we approve it with or without that, depending on if it's a requirement or a desire. Because if it's a requirement, we don't have much of a choice unless we find another street to break through. And I don't, I think you've explored all those other options. And that would just get a whole nother neighborhood all upset, right?
Kate Wagner, Dorchester, right. So, Todd, question for you. As this plan has changed over the years, do you have, are you anticipating or planning on putting walking trails throughout this community of this plan?
So, the walking trails that we had on the, on the PRD plans are not part of this plan.
Is the number of units affected by the narrower streets that you're proposing?
No.
That being said, if it's still at 53, I think most would agree that wider streets and sidewalks, at least in my camp, are saying they're safer when people park out front for an emergency, visitors and the like. So, I'm going to have to get to wider streets.
And then, the last thing I wanted to do was, originally, you talked about putting the gate. You heard about it tonight. If that is deemed that they're getting an access road, I would be in favor of the traffic mitigation of having the gate and not having the problem develop. That gap to go after an HOA to put an eventual gate or another deterrent, but start with that.
Okay. We're not going to be able to take any action tonight. We weren't expecting to take an action tonight with the extension. I apologize for not having, you know, more people here this evening. I will, I will do a little bit better job of confirming with people their intentions. So...
Not, not a problem for, for us. It was a chance to, to throw throughout these planning ideas. So...
It was a good opportunity to hear the interaction that's been ongoing and to listen to what our residents wanted to share this evening.
Any, any other comments about planning issues in general that anyone wants to?
Motion to adjourn?
Claudia Kieran, 35 Wesley Lane. I just have a really off question. You mentioned that the sellers are getting very anxious. They want you to come through with the plan, get moving. Would you consider selling this property to the residents on East Philip Drive or the people that are interested in preserving Sagely Farm?
I think I would be. It's a, it's a pricey project. I don't know where open space is in the township, but that's, it's not off the table at all.
So, follow up with a phone call? How do we follow up with you on that?
I'm happy to talk to you about that.
Okay. So, I'll call you at the office?
Surely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
We'll actually have to...
Oh, no, no.
No motion.
Yeah, so we...
Say goodnight?
I can say this meeting is adjourned. It's chairman of the planning commission. Thank you.
I'm not sure where this came from.
Uh, over, over.
Yeah, I can take it.